Fourth 2021 meeting of the planning board. Before we begin, I have a notice to read. An advisory from the Mass Department of Public Health has been issued for all non-vaccinated and full vaccinated people to wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission. Shrewsbury Worcester County has been categorized as a high level of community transmission for over a month. Therefore, we require that all employees and visitors in all municipal buildings wear a face mask. Abemptions from the mask requirement include those with a medical condition, medical or other eligible condition. In addition, we ask all those attending the meeting to practice social distancing, leaving space between yourself and other non-related parties also attending the meeting. The board members here tonight will also be masked and practicing social distancing through their seating arrangements. When speaking, we do ask that your face mask remains on. Thank you. With that, we have our first item of business is to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from June 3rd, 2021. Anyone on the board have any questions, comments, or edits to the meeting minutes? Mr. Jerry?
No, I have no questions or comments.
No sir.
And I don't have any questions or comments. I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as proposed to us from the June 3rd, 2021 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item of business is to review and sign bills. I have bills here. First one is Gatehouse, New England, special town meeting for legal ads for $301. Yankee Engineering and Testing Incorporated, 935 Main Street, geotechnical review for $1,560. Graves Engineering Falcon Farms, follow-up definitive plan review and soil test witness report for $546.50. Graves Engineering Zero Greenbrier Road, definitive plan review for $1,324.50. And Graves Engineering Wyman Farms Drainage Modification Review for $344.25. Total bills to be paid, $4,076.25. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept and sign the bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's just the one. Okay. While that's going around, we have board member comments. Mr. Jerry?
I have no comments this month.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments this month, sir.
And I don't have any comments either. Thank you. This brings us to our first hearing. This is a public meeting for change to rear of building lighting request for de minimis change for Shrewsbury Maple LLC, location 378 Maple Avenue. Good evening. Can you please introduce yourself?
My name is Susan Nichols. I represent the owner, Shrewsbury Maple LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Earlier this year, we installed some wall packs on the rear of the building of the shopping center. They were per the approved plan, site plan approved, that was approved previously by this group. We were then informed that an abutter had complained about the light that was coming from those wall packs. And we were asked to take a look at trying to solve the problem. Upon investigation, we had determined that there was some glare that was coming off of the fixtures and that could be seen, sorry, seen from the abutter's property. So we looked into some alternatives and we ultimately purchased some new fixtures. We have submitted the new photometric plan, which you should have.
Excuse me for one second. Could you, I think the people in the audience are having trouble hearing you. Could you speak up a little bit?
I guess so. Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
So you have the new photometric plan. It has the spec for the light, however, it doesn't actually have a picture of the new light. And so I did bring some. I, can I approach?
Sure, please.
So I brought.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you can see from the new fixture, well, if you look at your photometric plan, you can see the picture of what the old fixture looked like. It was not an adjustable type of fixture, so there was no way for us to do anything with the old fixture that was gonna remove the glare that was happening on the abutter's property. So we purchased these new fixtures and installed them. And you can see from the picture that there are two rotatable heads in there. And we have set them up with the inner head pointing straight down, no point, I'm sorry. The inner head is pointing slightly out and the outer head is pointing straight down, which results in no glare on the, you know, that can be seen from above from the abutter's property. And you can also tell from the photometric that it also throws less light in the parking lot back there. So we've just come before the board to ask for the de minimis change to allow those fixtures to be swapped out for the old fixtures.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions at this time?
I do not.
No, I don't.
Right. I do know that, I know myself and I know Jay, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to go to him to witness the new lighting. We did it on separate days. We did receive some communication from an abutter. I believe the abutter's here. So we have reviewed your comments. Although in normal meetings, we don't generally have public comment, but in this case, I'm open to if you wanted to expand a little bit more, if you didn't think that your comment or your letter portrayed the information that you would, if you wanted to expand on the information. Does anyone?
I'm having difficulty here.
She said, do you want to give any comments or whatever you have in the statement that you want?
Yes, I would like to make some statements. I used to use the site drawing showing various lights. On that drawing, there is, I'm gonna call it footcandle markings throughout the whole drawing. And I assume that these lights, the stationery lights are not a problem. They have so many booms, they shine down, they're easy to figure what the light candle is at the ground. The two different wall-mounted fixtures are not stationary. As she described, the recent one's putting in, you couldn't trust those. The original ones that were there are still on the building, on the east side of the building. And I believe they're on a dimmer switch. So I questioned the drawing that we just received. I was a contractor. First of all, I had questioned the engineer, not sign and stamp. I've been in the construction business for 50 years. I never received a drawing that did not have the engineer's stamp on it signed. That's the official document. The first, the first site drawing has the engineer's stamp, has the engineer's signature. The second one does not. At what setting were these two wall-mounted fixtures calculated for these footcandles to be spottable? That's my first question.
Got it. Ms. Nichols, could you, do you have an answer for that?
I do, I think. So first off, in response to the comment that the lights are on dimmers, that's not correct. These lights are not dimmable. Neither are the fixtures on the east side of the building, which are the original fixtures that are facing towards the power company. So we did not replace those fixtures. So that, that's just in response to that comment. As far as how the photometrics is calculated, the manufacturer of the light puts out a file that has the information of what the footcandles are for it. And that's what the engineer firm, Buller, uses to prepare the photometrics. I can't answer specifically, you know, what, there's only one output for the light. So I don't know specifically, you know, if there is any manipulation that's done with the photometrics when they do it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience?
I'd like to respond to that. The original fixtures, according to the catalog card, were available with a dimmer switch. I have not left my house in over a year and a half. And I've seen those fixtures at different illuminations. The new on the back of the building facing my house. The second question I have is, with the ones, the new fixtures, I received an email stating that the owner, or the owners' wife, were gonna adjust the lighting on October 12th or, or October 13th. And that the con planner and others were gonna visit the site the following night. How in the world did they know how to adjust those lights? There was no direction given. There's all different degrees that you can change those lights.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
So on-
If we approved these lights tonight, at what degree, at what setting are those lights gonna be approved?
Okay. All right, so, hold on, sir. Please answer.
So on the morning of, I don't, I don't remember the date, but the second morning that he just referenced, we, we had the electricians install the lights and I went there while it was still dark. I met the electrician onsite at 6:00 AM. I had him set the lights a certain way, the two rotations both pointing out. We determined that the, having the second one pointing out was still providing the same glare that the original fixture was doing. I went, drove up onto Edgemont Road, took a look from the road and could see that there was still some of that glare. So I got on the phone with the electrician who was on a ladder and he adjusted that outer one down until I couldn't see the glare anymore. And I had him do all the lights that way. There was one that wasn't quite at that point. It was the one that was on the reliant building facing in, not towards the abutter. We had left that one up and the evening that you guys had come to take a look at it, you determined that you didn't feel that that was probably appropriate to have it like that. So that one was turned down as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'd respond to that, please.
Sir, I can have one more question? Okay.
To respond to her answer about Edgemont Road. I drove down there tonight. I could see the fixtures in the light on those fixtures all the way down, especially tonight between the last two dual breaks. Now, the only one I could see was the one directly behind my house, because my house is blocking it. The one further, I'm gonna say towards Elm Street, is partially buried hidden because there's still foliage on the trees and the shrubs that I have planted here. But you can still see that light from Edgemont Road. And the only one you cannot see is the one directly behind my house, because my house is blocking it.
That's, sir, you do understand that?
Okay.
A light fixture mounted on, I, I have my neighbors have lights on the yard that I see as well. So we're talking about the light spillage onto the property lines? So I, I understand what you're saying. And I know that, Tim, you said that you went out?
I went out.
I went out. Based, I'm not, you've, based on what we saw, the light was definitely not spilling out past the property line on the date that we, it's not a conversation, I'm making a statement, okay? And so I felt satisfied that the light was not glaring up towards, and we went, actually went up to Edgemont Street as well. Ma'am, you have a question?
Well, I just wanna clarify. My name is Lisa Trowell, comedy, I'm Mr. and Mrs. Trowell's daughter. If you are inside my parents' home when those lights are on, there is glare inside the home, to the point that when they walk in the bathroom, one of the lights, and if you're looking at the plan, it would be the third D, if you're counting them from the, the left. It hits them like a bullseye, right in their eyes as they walk into their bathroom. So I would respectfully disagree that there's no spillage. I mean, we have pictures to show, my husband and I were able to walk in their backyard in the dead of night with just those two lights directly behind their home without any assistance of any other lights. So that I would respectfully disagree that there's no spillage.
Okay. One last question, sir.
One other point is, Edgemont Road is how many feet above those fixtures? And if you, I'm gonna say they're 10 feet above where those fixtures are mounted, you can still see the light from Edgemont Road, from those fixtures. So there is glare up onto Edgemont Road.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. All right. That being said, does anybody have any questions or comments from the board relative to the lights or based on your observations when you were at the, the site visit?
No, sir.
I do not.
Well, I don't, I-
Mr. Chairman, did you want to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to, or see if there's anything she has left to say?
Would you like to respond to any of the last comments that were made?
No, I have nothing left to say.
Very good. Thank you. As I, as I mentioned, we did go out to the site and I, I, my experience is that the light is much better in compliance photometric plan, seems to, in order that there's no spillage going onto the property, abutting property. I'm entertaining that this could definitely fall into a de minimis change, hoping for the board's suggestions on that.
Do you want to close the public meeting?
Oh, yes, we can do that, sir. So why don't we, there's no, yeah, there's no more questions from the board. Entertain a motion to close the public meeting. I'm closing the public hearing right now, sir. Meeting. One last comment.
This is a part of the light issue where I think it's very important to spend a little bit of time on this. How, if, if the board approves these lights, are they gonna approve these lights as they are tonight? Or just approve the lights where the owner is able to tomorrow or next week, next Monday, adjust them to their satisfaction? I'd like an answer for that.
So, so I'll, I'll respond to that. So Ms. Nichols is making you aware that the board and the town employees that did go out to the site are expecting that the situation that the lights were set at, at that point, that is what we're discussing today. If for some reason something changes beyond that, and I, no, sir, listen to me, if for some reason you feel that they've changed the light direction, I believe this falls under an enforcement situation with the building department. And I think Ms. Sheehan will be the person that you can, you can direct your questions or comments to.
Is that possible to get it in writing from the-
This is, this is part of the public, this is part of the public record.
Any further, they want their adjustment tonight?
Okay, well, this is part of the public record. We have a wonderful person that's taking meeting minute notes that this will be documented in the meeting minute notes. So there's a secondary place for the document, for the conversation we had today. Okay, sir? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public meeting.
I move that we close the public meeting for Shrewsbury Maple LLC at 378 Maple Avenue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, discuss the ability, the understanding, is this technical, fall under a de minimis change?
I believe it's de minimis.
I believe it is de minimis, Ms. Nichols. So, entertain a motion.
I move that we find the changes as de minimis and accept the changes as proposed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Our next public hearing is a continued public, uh, public hearing for a parking lot expansion and alterations. Site plan approval for SITIVA, location is 800 Boston Turnpike. Is the applicant present?
I'm Sean Barry from Level Design Group here tonight on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, I, I know you were mentioning, we could hear it, but you may have to just restate your name for me, please.
Yeah, I'll repeat it, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Kay?
Yeah, I'll take, thank you.
All right, so just to reiterate myself, I'm Sean Barry from Level Design Group in Plainville. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Kurt Budnick, and SITIVA. Just a quick synopsis of things that have changed since the last time I was up here. We're still proposing the 64 new parking spaces. Let me just flip to the layout page. And we're proposing improvements to the isolated land subject to flooding. This is to prevent the current flooding that's happening in the existing building. We, we've completed the comment responses, pretty minor stuff. I know there's a comment about binder width, that's been updated. I submitted a site plan waiver withdrawal request to Bernie the other day because a recorded variance regarding the landscape buffer for the property was shown to Bernie. The only other thing, at the last Concom meeting, they voted to approve, they had some minor changes they wanted me to make, one of them being, sorry, changing the species of the Kosa Dogwood to native Dogwood and changing the Japanese Holly to Inkberry Holly. In addition to that, they had me change the area that's being replicated to a one-to-one ratio. Before it was 1,575 square feet being replicated, now it's 1450. 1450 also being what's being disturbed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Jerry?
I have no questions or comments on this one.
Mr. Thomas?
I also have no questions or comments.
I don't have any questions or comments either. It doesn't appear that we have anybody from the public here. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing for parking lot expansion and alterations. Site plan approval for SITIVA, 900 Boston Turnpike.
800 Boston.
800, yes. Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. For us, we have a draft decision. I trust that you've gone through and reviewed this. Is there anything in the decision that we have questions or comments about? Mr. Jerry?
Uh, no, I had no questions or comments about that.
Straightforward, Mr. Thomas?
Um, the only question I have is, so we are removing the-
The waiver.
The waiver from the-
Correct. So, yes, so you will have to have a vote on accepting the withdrawal of the waiver. So you can have that separate if you want and then vote on the-
Okay, so-
To accept the waiver withdrawal request.
So we'll do that first before, before we do anything on the-
Yeah, that's fine.
So, so we should, and, because it was, it was a redundancy thing, because they already had the ZBA.
Correct, right. So the variance covered what they were asking for the waiver for.
Correct. So why don't we have a motion to withdraw the waiver?
I move that we withdraw the waiver request from the, accept the waiver request?
Withdraw?
Accept the waiver withdrawal.
Perfect.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, to the decision itself, any questions or comments relative to that? No.
I have none.
Okay. So entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the site plan, uh, site plan and for parking lot expansion and alterations at SITIVA at 800 Boston Turnpike as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business is South Street Falcon Farms, nine lot subdivision, definitive subdivision. Continued public hearing for location 581-587 South Street. I do not see the applicant here. Do we have any correspondence for the applicant today, Mr. Kay?
No, I've not received anything.
No. Well, since we don't have the applicant here, we've had many conversations with this particular site and understanding that he's gone through or continuing to go through issues relative to conservation and our most recent information with construction of the crossing and so forth, I, I believe he's probably got some more work that needs to be done. Myself, I believe this anyways. I'm, I'm thinking he could probably get that done in the next several months. So rather than kicking this down month to month, and I know we've discussed that we're getting near the end of our patience at this, at this time, I'm, I'm open to continuing this to the February meeting. That should give him ample time to work out any situation he has with conservation and the planning department relative to the crossing, crossing. So if everyone else is in agreement with that, I guess we can make a motion to continue the public hearing until February 3, 2022. Does anybody have questions or comments relative to-
My only comment is, I think that we need to wrap this up in February. Like, I think we've said for like four months now, we need to wrap it up.
This will be basically a year?
Yeah.
Pretty much a year from the, from the time of filing.
We've said for four months, we need to wrap it up and we haven't done that, so.
I understand. So, it's the holiday season, Jay, I'm, I'm feeling-
It's a season of giving, okay.
It's almost the holiday season, I should say. We're past Halloween, right? So does anybody have any comments or questions or are you okay with that? Or would you rather, by all means, speak up.
I'm good with continuing it to February. I think February's a good, good timeframe for us and the applicant.
I, I would agree that that's reasonable, provided that we make every effort to make a, conclude this matter in February.
So maybe I can ask the town planner to reach out to the applicant tomorrow or sometime next week, explain that we continue the hearing until February, but with the full expectation that all conservation matters should be addressed and any of the matters open in front of the planning department or the engineering department relative to that crossing have been addressed, because we do wanna, we wanna close this thing up.
I can do that.
Now, we still may have issues with the site, but the two items that are preventing us from having any further conversations is the linchpin of the crossing.
Yes, I can do that and make sure at the very least we get everything back that I've requested in the last few months.
Right, you have outstanding items as well, correct.
You have a few outstanding items as well. So I think it's quite generous to give this applicant three months to squareway conservation and come back with a, the house in order, so to speak, for this, this subdivision.
Very good. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing for South Street Falcon Farms, nine lot subdivision, location 581 to 587 South Street, to February 3, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brings us to our next item of business, which is a mixed-use commercial residential development site plan approval and special permit for Harrington Avenue 34 LLC. It's a continued public hearing, location's 3436 Harrington Avenue. And just for the record, Mr. Iliadi will be sitting in on this hearing. Mr. Grenier, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, gentlemen. For the record, John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates. And we are here to present revisions we have made since our last meeting with you folks. As a side note, we were before the- As a side note, we were before the Conservation Commission. And the only feedback that we received, um, for conservation wise was on the easterly side of the site, which would be the rear, um, opposite Harrington Avenue. Where we can have a garbriel, and originally we were proposing a four-foot black chain link fence for safety. What they requested is that we have a solid six-foot high, more like white vinyl or something along that line. So that there would be less doubt to plow snow or push snow off the edge, so it was more just to protect the resource area. So that's reflected on these plans as well. So, um, really, I think once we can finalize the layout and whatnot, any issues that we may have with the planning board, I feel confident that we're, we're in good shape with conservation. So with that said, the concerns that we understand the board had were to make sure that we have adequate, um, parking beyond what is required under zoning. So that if there are additional cars for residents, that we have the ability to have overflow or even more excess parking. Also, snow storage areas, um, so that it's not required to be, you know, pulling or trucking snow off the site consistently. So that was one other thing. And also to try to reduce the amount of traffic in and out of the site. So what we have proposed with this modification is we reduce the, the square footage of the retail building. If you'll recall, before it was set on the site, in the same location, but it was, it was longer and it took up this portion of the site. So the front of the building would be more facing as you come in the entrance. So we reduced the square footage of it and we rotated it, so now it fronts on Harrington Avenue, so that it would have a better street presence. And with the previous, uh, site layout, we had kind of a dog leg turnaround for emergency vehicles. And also by rotating this building and having a, a parking driving aisle here, we're able to achieve the same, uh, truck turning radiuses. So that emergency vehicles can, they could pull in, do a three-point turn, and come out of the site. So we feel that this flow works even better for emergen, emergency vehicles than in the previous submittal. And this also allowed us to, we had parking spaces that were kind of along the entrance driving aisle with the previous submittal. So by placing parking spaces on what would be the, the rear of the commercial slash retail building, we're pulling parking spaces away from that entrance drive. So that there's less confusion, cars backing out, cars trying to pull in. So we, we believe that this addresses that, um, that even, that even better as well. We looked at the, in the traffic manuals for the trips in and out of the site. And, um, as you know, typically residential, you'll have more, um, traffic in the, you know, before work, people leaving for work. And then you'll have your evening peak, you know, four to six. The retail would drive more constant trips in and out, not necessarily at the peaks, but it would have more trips during the day. So, uh, looking at the traffic, uh, the traffic manuals, the, by reducing this, overall, we're reducing the amount of trips in and out of the site from the previous layout by twenty-five percent. So, uh, we have less traffic consistently in and out, although we do, as with any residential, we'll have the peaks in the mornings and the evenings. So, uh, we, we know that you were looking for a reduction in the number of units. We did, I did talk to my client, they would like to keep the number of units as they are now, knowing that two units are gonna be affordable. So although there's sixteen units, there's really forty, because two of them would be rented at a, at a reduced rental rate. So, again, they wanna have a successful project, they want this to be, um, you know, they hired a good architect using high-end materials. They want it to be something that is, um, fits in, especially with, you know, the nice development across the street over at Lakeway Commons. So, uh, they wanna do a first-class type of project. And being able to maintain fourteen market rate units, I think would, would help them economically to, to make that, make it a successful project. So, and we did, um, we were having a, a meeting with the police chief earlier in the week, unfortunately, he was unable to, to make that meeting. We did discuss looking at the, the driveway entrance in and out of Lakeway Commons and over, is it Muzzy?
Muzzy, yeah.
Over at Muzzy. I don't know how we could change anything on this site. We do have limited location for driveway access. And one other thing I'd like to mention, Johnson Street, um, at the last hearing, I was under the impression that Walgreens uses that for deliveries. After the meeting, uh, we were speaking with, uh, the abutter, who, um, Mr. Abasha. And because I, I saw a tractor trailer that was parked there, that's been there for quite a while, I thought that was something from, one of the deliveries from Walgreens. And actually, he said it's one of his tenants who, whose tractor trailer is, and he parks it there off to the side. And he let me know that Walgreens does not use that whatsoever, they don't, no traffic, all their deliveries come in off of Route Nine. So the only person who uses that is him, um, so that he can get access in and out of the back of his site. So that, uh, what's, what's shown is Johnson Street, which is kind of a back driveway to Walgreens, nobody uses that at all. So there's no conflicts with that, and really, that's the closest driveway to our property. But beyond that, I don't know how we would change, that's really the only location for our access drive, I don't know how we could change it. It kind of, I mean, to be blunt, it kind of is what it is. I don't know that we could do anything, we could put, you know, a stop bar and a stop sign. But beyond that, I don't see anything of any substance that would, that we would change for the location of that driveway at all. But I'd put that to the board with, with any, any suggestions or, or questions that they might have on that.
Okay.
And that, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jerry, any questions?
Uh, yeah, my only question is, uh, with the redesigned retail building, I didn't see any elevations of what that now looks like.
No, and, um, we just wanted to run this by you. And just before we start creating new architectural elevations and, you know, iterations, we wanna make sure that this is something that you're on board with. And then we can obviously generate those, so you can look at them. But they would be in keeping with what we have had with the previous, um, elevations.
And so just to be clear, the entrance to that building will be essentially from the parking side of it?
It would.
And so you'll do some sort of facade on the street side?
Yes.
Look appropriate?
Correct. That's all I have.
Mr. Iliadi, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas?
Um, John, did we find out who owns Johnson Street?
That is, um, it is owned by Cole Bonin, which Cole Bonin, they own...
Right.
They own the corner and they lease the property to Walgreens, so that is part of their property.
And there's, there's no way you could, I, I guess there really isn't a spot to put an entrance or a second exit there, whatever. Because that would work out good for the project if you could have a second... Exit there. Because I know, it's, yeah, it's not a town-owned street, it's, it's owned by, you're right, I, I knew it was a private road.
It, it is, and I don't even know, it's, it's named, but it's...
Yeah, it's a name, but it's not really a named street, right?
No, no, it's, and it's not like it's a, a, the town, I don't think has any, I mean, they don't maintain it.
Nope.
No rights to it, so, so, um, maybe that historically was Johnson Street, I don't remember, Howard Johnson's was there, you know?
Right.
When I was a little kid. So I, I don't really know it serves any purpose, and I don't even know that it would be helpful to us to have another way in and out. I think it just might confuse things, because now you have multiple entrances right next to each other. I think it might cause more problems than it solves.
Yeah.
And the fire department, although the good, one good thing about it is when we met with the fire department, they said, well, that's a pretty good, one good thing is that if there's a fire, they have good access.
You'll have great access, right, it's right there, you're right on it.
Right.
So that building, you have, there's acc, if there's a fire or something at that building, you're, you'd be right at it with no traffic in the way.
And one other thing that we, we do have, and this was discussed with, with Bernie, is there is a sidewalk that comes from Walgreens, it comes all the way up here. And then, um, it, it kind of ends, so we're tying our sidewalk into the sidewalk. So if anybody, uh, comes from the site, they wanna go down towards Route Nine, um, we do have that connectivity to go down towards Route Nine. And I don't know if it would make any sense to extend any driveway, any, any sidewalk further up, but, um...
I don't think there's any more sidewalks on that side of the road going down Harrington.
I don't think there is.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, this is probably a good time for me to say, I'm glad we're talking about this. This, this section is actually, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, is within the town's right-of-way. If you see this right angle, that is correct, right?
That's correct, yeah, it's very, it's very obscure, the, kind of jogs in for some peculiar reason, I don't know.
We're not exactly sure the history behind that. However, what that does provide us with is an opportunity, and I've been talking and speaking with Andy and others at DPW about possibly, um, not closing off Johnson Street, but just making it slightly narrower and putting a crosswalk in. Because it is quite a wide opening for a, an access road that does not get used very often.
The, the top of Johnson Street, we'll say?
Yeah, so pulling, pulling the north down, where, where John's finger is pulling it down a little bit closer to the southern side. So the walk across the opening isn't so far for pedestrian, to put it, and there are some grants out there, complete streets, shared streets. So like, we're gonna talk about it and see if we can't do it in conjunction with this project and try to get, you know, every little part of a network that we can put in town is, is great. So we're gonna look into that for sure.
And if there's anything we can do to, you know, work with you on that, we're...
We'll let you know, for sure.
We're fine to do that.
Uh, well, I have the floor, Mr. Chairman. John, could you actually quickly, and I'm sorry, Jay, uh, just go over the, the new parking count with the reduced commercial space to demonstrate what is now the, if you will, the required dedicated parking spots and now the visitor parking spots? Like, what's changed in that regard?
Sure, so, uh, right now, just so everybody knows, the requirement for residential, it's required to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. Which the required parking would be twenty-four spaces. And we are providing twenty-seven dedicated to the residential. And then for the retail, if we do retail, it could be commercial, but retail would be the mo, more intensive. So based on that, if it were retail, because we anticipate that it would probably, probably would be, it's one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. So that would require four spaces, and so we're gonna have six spaces, um, associated with that. So the total required is twenty-eight spaces, and, uh, we're providing thirty-three spaces. And we have one handicap, pardon that, we have one handicap space located, um, adjacent to the retail building. And then we have a handicap space that's in front of the residential. So, um, nobody's gonna have to try to venture across a, a driving aisle to get to, to either facility.
Okay, um, I, I am glad the, I like the, the change. It certainly is helpful in terms of safety for the vehicles, uh, coming in and out of the site with the new positioning of the retail space. I am concerned a little bit that the snow storage identified is in an area that is right out on Harrington Ave. And that's a recipe for disaster. So I, I really would like to reiterate the fact that I think if we can get the units smaller, you may be able to do something on the bottom end of the, where the... The housing built, building is, to maybe put some snow storage or something to that effect over, over that side. Like I said, initially, we, we did the historic, history for that particular site, and the number of units was thirteen. And we do know that that was a long time ago and, and things have changed quite a bit. So, I mean, I, I would prefer that we look at trying to reduce that. I know that financially, you, it's, it's a, it's a challenge. Unfortunately, um, there's other considerations that this board has that are not financial in nature. So I, I really think we need to maybe take a look at that, and I think it would help with the snow storage. Because I got a big concern that all the residential parking, they have, when they go to leave in the morning, because for some reason, it always snows at nighttime, and it's always the morning when you have to get out. That there's no place for them to place the snow for them to get out of there, or they're gonna end up throwing the snow over the wooden barrier, uh, the wooden garbriel that you have right up against that. Whether it's, it's the vinyl fencing or whatever fencing is, is finally designed, uh, decided upon, that it, it's just gonna get very messy down there. And I think it's gonna be kind of dangerous. So I, I would, I would ask that you please go back again and see if we can do something. Like I said, it was, it was kind of half joking, but it wasn't so much. Uh, when Steve said initially you thought you had three units that you needed to have, and now you only have two. So it's really only a reduction of one, as far as I'm concerned. So, but it's, it's about getting some snow storage area. Because it's kind of a dead-end site, there's not, there's not a, your, your ability to traverse, traverse the site is somewhat limited. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered.
You, you have a lot of, you have a lot of, you have a lot of tar, so then in turn, you have a lot of snow. And to pile up that snow on the end, on the corner of Harrington Ave, is really the only place you have to pile it. So when people are trying to go right or left out of the site, they're gonna be looking at mountains of snow, if that's your only snow storage space.
There is, there is another location in front where the bumpout is by the retail space.
Yeah, but that's...
That's a very small space.
You have a lot of tar there.
Yes. So that's, that's just, I, I appreciate the fact of you changing the site around to make it far more safe internal circulation-wise.
I like this layout much better. I think it's much better, I totally agree. But I also agree with Mr. Belay, and you know my feelings on it, making it smaller also, but I agree with Mr. Belay. One, the, the snow storage is actually worse now, that's a worse spot to put it than where it was before. And, yeah, it's, that, that's super dangerous in my, in my opinion.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I mean, technically, that's dumping in right away, town right away.
I was just gonna ask that question, based on the comment you made earlier, it's not even being placed within the property, is that...
Yeah, so maybe those bumpouts going onto Harrington, those aren't even an option for you, John?
Yeah, we were looking for green space to, to throw some snow.
Yeah, there's not much there, so you may want to make that building a little bit smaller and have some green space.
Okay, that's all I have for questions or comments at this time. Is there, obviously, there's, um, my eyes are not deceiving me, we have no public here for comments from the...
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I make just a couple, just quick comments? I know there's no one from the public here this evening. The first one was regarding the retaining wall.
Oh, thank you.
We did receive a note, um, saying that it would, uh, to be designed by others. Since we've had some issues in prior years, I'm thinking four years ago, uh, we, and I believe you, did, were you working on seven and nine Centec? That was, or five and...
No. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm, you're right, you're right.
Five and nine, so...
We gave a wall design as part of that.
Right.
And, um, we have, um, a, a wall engineer. We just wanted to make sure that, uh, we weren't gonna be making any radical changes, and then all of a sudden, we have a wall, and then we have to change the design of the wall. So we kind of wanted to make sure that we were kind of close to nailing it down before we pulled the trigger. But that, that's something where if that's a condition, um, or you want it now, we're gonna do it.
Well, I thank you for, that was a reminder, because I actually was talking to Mr. Cahill about this, um, earlier this week. Based on recent, um, experience, retaining walls have, have kind of moved up the ladder of importance, as far as I'm concerned in this board. So I, my preference would be to have a designed...
Sure.
On the drawing, so we understand what exactly it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other real quick comment, uh, John, is actually a suggestion, would be just following line of sight from how someone from the U.S.A. residences... just following line of sight from how someone from the, you say, residences, uh, the apartment building would get over to that commercial building. Now, I don't know what's gonna go in there yet. Could be food-related, may not be food-related, but whatever it is, if they wanna get there, um, would be to put some sort of, if not a painted crosswalk, my preference would be some sort of alternate material to asphalt to cross the street.
Going right across here?
Correct, to where it says "snow storage" on the right-hand side. Yeah, as you cross, if you're a pedestrian crossing from the apartments, correct.
Right, so do.
Would be to, in, uh, alternate, um, alternate to pavement, um, material. So it really pops out as people drive in that driveway.
That's.
If there's a pedestrian on it, they get, it's just the more color, the more differences you see, the eyes just pick them faster and it's a little safer.
We'll try to do something that's, you know, besides striping it so it has a little bit, a little, a little more upscale.
Right, sure. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
That was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, with that, if nobody has any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close, I mean, to, uh, continue the public hearing.
I thought you all right the first time.
I move that we continue the public hearing for a mixed-use commercial residential development site plan approval and special permit for thirty-four to thirty-six Harrington Avenue to, Harrington Avenue to December second, twenty twenty-one at seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
You as well.
Jay, if you would read the legal notice?
Yep, sir.
Our next public hearing is a new public hearing for a new two-family duplex site plan approval and special permit.
Do I sign?
Gold Star Builders.
Oh, oh, my.
Location eight to twelve Pine Dale Road. And Mr. Thomas, please read the public notice.
All right, thanks a lot.
Shusby Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, November fourth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M in the Sleckman Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shusby, Mass. To hear the application of Gold Star Builders, Sixth Jake Street, Worcester, Mass., zero one six zero three, as required by the Town of Shusby zoning by law, Section seven, subsection F three, Section seven, Table two, footnote eighteen in Section seven, B ten, for site plan approval and special permit by the Planning Board for the construction of one duplex in the Residence B two zoning district at eight dash twelve Pine Dale Road. For its development, it's shown on plans entitled Pine Dale Duplex, eight dash twelve Pine Dale Road, and eleven sheets dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Level Design Group, two forty-nine South Street, Unit one, Plainville, Mass., zero two seven six two. Stand by Nicola Fassandola, P E. The subject project is located northerly of Villa Road and southerly of Pine Dale Road and consists in whole or in part of Shusby Assessor's Tax plate thirty-eight, plot zero five two zero zero zero. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shusby, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, I do have a letter, uh, from the applicant requesting that the hearing be continued. So if anyone doesn't have questions or comments relative to continuing the public hearing, I want to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the new two-family duplex site plan approval and special permit, uh, at eight dash twelve Pine Dale Road to our December second, twenty twenty-one meeting at seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Okay, that does it for our meetings for this evening. Um, I do have some new business to discuss. Uh, the first is to vote and issue a bond for Centec Park North Site Plan and Special Permit in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Do I have any questions or comments relative to the bond?
I have none.
No, sir.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the issuance of the bond for Centec North Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our other item is a, kind of a cleanup activity from something that was discovered many years ago. So in two, in order to make sure that everything, all the I's are dotted and T's are crossed, we have a release of technical fees for one thousand Boston Turnpike Site Plan Modification. And basically, it's, there's just not a record of this board approving that and we just want to make sure that it's on record. So I'll entertain a motion to release the, um,
Entirety.
The, release the technical review fees in its entirety.
I move that we release the technical review fees in their entirety for one thousand Boston Turnpike Site Plan Modification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some correspondence, Mr. Chairman, this evening. We, uh, I had overlooked putting these, the A and B, uh, the first two letters of no appeal for nine thirty-five Main Street on the last agenda from last month. They are there now. Um, there is a letter from myself, uh, to Mr. Venencasa, the developer of Wyman Farms, nine thirty-five Main Street, uh, verifying that the conditions of that site plan modification decision to oversee with the geotechnical engineer. Uh, the site construction has been completed and we're verifying that. And then the final letter is, um, from Core States Group, the, uh, group that was here from Texas, uh, was a month or so ago, um, for that de minimis change for the parking lot over where, um, the Bob store is and Staples Plaza. They are unfortunately unable to do all of the changes that, that were approved by this board, but they're gonna be able to do most of the changes. They're gonna be able to do the, um, the facade changes. They're gonna be able to do the, um, what's it called, handicap parking changes, but the rest of the striping, something came up with the owner and the other tenants and they're not able at this time to do it. So I've reached out to them and let them know that, of course, the planning department's always open to reducing impervious surfaces in town and providing any new greenage for structures. So please reach out whenever they want to or can, and we're happy to discuss that. But at this time, they're not able to do it. So any questions about any of those or comments?
Pretty straightforward.
All right, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude tonight's public meetings, hearings and meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.